I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of events from the October 21st meeting.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number three is hearing of public concerns. Mr. Cox?
The repaving, for sake of argument, that was done to the Eastland Estates the Tuesday after your last meeting left a little bit to be desired. At South Court, there's a portion to the east that is not repaved at all. And the yards to the north and the south have approximately three feet of gravel and tar in their front yard. At Middle Court, there's a section of tar by the stop sign, five feet wide and eight of my paces long. The lady that I know in North Court had her mailbox knocked over by the machinery, and I understand that's been repaired. But the current condition of the road is like walking on popcorn. Crunch, 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 crunch. The loose gravel that is on the street, and this is after a steamroll was used in the process, looks like a washboard for a block and a half from 34. And it vibrates the vehicle immensely, really does. I personally would rate it at a D minus production. It almost appears as if the driver of the unit applying the tar and the gravel was under the influence of something because straight lines-
Can we not make those allegations?
You can't make those allegations. You can't do that.
Okay, then I won't say that he looked like he was drunk, but okay, I won't say that.
You said it twice now. Can I, Ms. Leatherman?
Yes.
I never interrupt people with their time. But Mr. Cox, you have been here every week, which is absolutely your right, and we certainly encourage comments from the public, but you have been here on the same issue dozens of times. And the truth is, we as city administration and staff have talked to council about your concern, and the amount of times you have come and we have tried to do everything that we can based on the surface of your road that I will remind you we inherited from a township when you were annexed in. With that being said, you complained so much about the staff at the street department doing these repairs. They were worried they were going to be terminated, which was never on the table, by the way. So the street department and the engineering department paid for a professional company to do this work, and now you are again making these allegations. So we did not even do this work in-house. Because of how many times you have come and addressed council, we paid for a professional firm that does this every day to do it. Still you have complaints, still you have allegations. So I am sorry that we cannot make you happy, but the truth is, you making allegations about the staff, you making allegations about a private company are just things that should not be done. And it's quite frankly become insulting.
Well, if it was fixed correctly the first time, this would not ever be a problem.
It is the only option in my conversation with you that you gave possible. You were not interested in pavement, and we talked about pavement and the process that would be involved in pavement, that we'd have to drill through the core that was through the street to figure out how deep the base was, or if there was a base. We also then talked about the factor that if this, if we did go with pavement, we would have to close down the entrance into Huntington Drive. And then you also even proceeded to tell me about some stories that had offers about alternative routes into Huntington Drive while that type of project was going to be undertaken. So I will admit, I walked into this thinking, okay, this would be a pretty straightforward solution. Tar and gravel was the best route. I mean, I drive on a number of tar and gravel roads around the county. The one right by my house is tar and gravel. So the way I get to work every day is a tar and gravel road, and it works well. Do we get rocks? Yeah, we get rocks right after they put it down, but within a few days, it has leveled itself out. I'm not sure what else our street departments or any of our departments could do for you. We got you the sign that you asked for, everything.
I know, I've talked to two residents out there, and I just asked them, they said, "Where's your opinion on having a street paved?" They said they didn't want it. They said they bought their house, it was a chip and seal road. They accept that. The only comment he made was, was one of the residents made was, was he said, "I wish you guys would do it in the spring and not in the fall." He also said to me, he said, "We don't have enough traffic going in and out to push it down," and he said, "I don't have a problem with it." He wrote, "Not wide enough," and he was very adamant, he said, "I don't even want an assessment and have to deal with the fact of having a paved road." So if there's other residents that are complaining, where are they?
Maybe you should do a survey, but the point is that I'm not trying to lay the blame on anyone. As the mayor said, Pulaski ceded the road to Bryan. When it was being maintained by Pulaski, they had a chip and seal operation periodically that was satisfactory to everybody in the estates. But we have come down from that chip and seal road, we're now on a loose gravel road, and the chances of the loose gravel staying in the streets with the snow plows coming is nil. We know where they're going to end up. It's in our yards. We're not asking for the cream of the crop, road repair, just the chip and seal was fine with everybody in the area, but you don't solve a problem by covering it up. Again, the tar is not super glue, it's not going to cement the subsurface into a solid intact piece. So you have put material that absolutely meets spec down that's on a bad base, and you're going to have future problems.
Okay.
Understood.
We're doing the best we can. Like I said, if you really want to have a paved street, get a majority of the residents to sign a petition-
That's already been done. Two years ago, it was brought in.
No, he did a survey on a piece of paper.
Oh, I'm talking a petition, an actual petition, with a majority of the homeowners out there who want to have a paved street. And then realize, it's going to be two to three months where you're not going to be able to come into your housing, you're going to carry your groceries, carry your lawn orders, gas. It's not going to be an in and out.
Not to mention assessment.
Right, and there's an assessment on your property as well.
Well-
Who wants that inconvenience?
Understood, but the process that was done by Pulaski, they started at the top of Huntington Drive-
Plaski Township. It was the township that-
Sorry, okay, okay, it wasn't, okay.
Okay, and when they did it, they started at the north end of the complex, went through it. They started after nine o'clock so that the traffic could go in for the people commuting, and they were done by four thirty, the entire section. And this was the chip and seal, and it was a solid pavement.
And how long did this process take?
Pardon?
How long did this process take?
It started approximately nine thirty in the morning-
Okay.
And they finished up approximately one thirty in the afternoon.
What's the difference between that and what just happened?
Yeah.
I don't understand what's the difference.
It's a much better surface for the road. Chip and seal is much better than tar and gravel.
Chip seal was done two weeks ago. That's chip seal.
And it was rolled.
Same thing Plaski Township did.
And it was rolled.
And they rolled it.
Yeah.
Okay, but they didn't machine it down, mill it down, reheat it, reapply it.
They don't.
You can't mill chip seal.
They don't.
It's never been milled.
You guys identified the piece of the road surface that I brought in.
That was layers of stone and asphalt and tar binder put on top of a stone road. It has the appearance of an asphalt road, but it is simply layers of chip seal built up over time. It is not asphalt, it is chip seal, it is asphalt, binder, tar, and stone layered together. The process you've seen for 30 years, that's layers of-
That is incorrect from my personal observation.
Apparently, we have different observations. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, counsel.
Any other public concerns? All right, number four, Pat, is an ordinance, would you please number read?
Ordinance number 39, 2024, an ordinance to amend section 509.12 entitled Excessive Noise.
Counsel, we are revisiting this ordinance for two reasons. With it came a couple unintended consequences I'm going to request you address or at least discuss this evening. One is construction and repairing of buildings. So brought to our attention, you obviously, people, they get off work, they go do some outside work, maybe they're working on siding, roofing, whatever. So we just wanted to extend that time to 9:00 PM so that it wasn't affecting the neighbors in a negative way, but still allowed them to make that noise and do the work and not have to get a contractor in during the day. And then on the last page, there are some refuse collections throughout the city that start business districts at 5:00 AM. Previously, we had 6:00 AM. So we just backed that up an hour in the morning so that they can get through their business route before they work on residential either in other communities. Again, this is worded very strangely, but it is because it's an exemption from what's not allowed. We are allowing refuse collection, but not, but it has to be outside of the hours of midnight to 5:00. So basically, from 5:01 AM until 11:59 PM, it is allowed to be picked up.
Need to suspend this?
Um, yes.
Motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Was that Rick?
Steve.
Start again.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number five is an ordinance, Pat, please number read.
Ordinance number 40, 2024, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a work authorization agreement with Arcadis US Inc. to provide additional basic design phase scopeless services for the city of Bryan's wastewater treatment plant, secondary treatment improvements, Phase One project, and appropriating 120,000 for this agreement.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Throughout the design for the secondary treatment project, we ran into a few issues with engineering that were unexpected. We worked through them, have solutions to them, but it did eat up some of the gas in the tank that we had as far as the cost goes for the project projected at the beginning here. The main driver of it was the building design that we originally had and the place that we originally had designed to put this thing. Turns out that when we did the ground compaction test, that it did not pass for the weight of the building that we have to build there for the size of the building. We had originally had a full masonry building there with masonry slab roof. In the long run, the way around it was to either drill down, put pilings in, go down 30 feet, which was a really excessive cost to be able to prop this building up, or move the building over to another site and basically redesign the building, footprint's still exactly the same, floor plan's still exactly the same. But what we did was back away from a full masonry building and went with metal stud building with the masonry wrap around it to get some weight off that building. So that was the main driver for cost. There were a few other small things in here. Probably the second biggest cost was our chemical building that's part of the design. It had originally not planned to have to have fire suppression in there. State kind of took a look at it, got with Arcadis and said, "No, you need fire protection. You have to have water system in there." So we went back and spent some time in engineering, really looking at that, worked with the fire chief, found a solution to not have to have the fire suppression in there, significant savings. So those two things really drive the vast majority of this. One last issue is, is we may have to put a stormwater system in out there to capture runoff because of the size of the work area that we're disturbing there. Been working with Bryan on that, and we're taking a look at it, trying to put all the money in here that we think we might need if we don't get any breaks on it whatsoever. So that's driving a little bit of this extra money. Beyond that, all of the things that we had to change going through design, just small potatoes things, but they all add up in the long run. So that puts us at about 120 over, asking your permission to sign an agreement to move that value up. About half of that money is still part of the loan that you've already approved, is just contingency money, and we need your approval to move forward with that.
There's no conversation, I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I'll move to approve.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I would also add, the next council meeting, I'll probably be bringing the GMP price too, which is guaranteed maximum price for the project. We're getting really close here. We're running on the edge of time, but we think we'll have it for you next time around.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is an ordinance, Pat, please number read.
Ordinance number 41, 2024, an ordinance to establish the salary for the mayor of the city of Bryan for the years 2026 through 2029.
There's no discussion, I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number seven is an ordinance, Pat, please number read.
Ordinance number 42, 2024, an ordinance to establish the salary for the city of Bryan city council members for the calendar year beginning in 2026.
I do have a couple of comments on this, on the council issue, just as an informational piece to understand some historical perspective here. The last council increase in their per-meeting rate was 2009. It went from 150 to 250 per meeting. This, which was like a 60s, about two-thirds of an increase. What we're looking at is, from 2009, this would be effective January of '26, which would be 17 years, and it's basically a 20% increase going from 250 to 300, which is about a 1% increase per year. Given the comps of the other cities, our own size, we're still at or below those other council payments. Also, there's been a substantial increase in council time, driven, I think, quite a bit, this is my own personal opinion, anybody can disagree, a lot with the budget and union negotiations have definitely increased, which increases our time besides the typical issues of answering texts, emails, phones, Walmart, chief, public comments, which is all good. I laugh about it, but I welcome people to talk to me. I don't push, I welcome it. If I can't explain it, I don't do it. So I don't, I have no problem talking with people about stuff, and oftentimes, the person goes away going, "Oh, I didn't think of it that way," which is a very satisfying thing for me. So I think with all that increase in kinds of stuff, that this is a, certainly a conservative, fair amount to request, and that's coming from someone who ran for city council who didn't think we got paid at all.
On the same way.
Yeah, so at any rate, with that being said, I will move to suspend, all right?
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number eight is an ordinance, Pat, please number read.
This is ordinance number 43, 2024, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for 2025 to Plaski Township.
Yeah, good evening. This ordinance is our annual contract. Plaski Township, we're looking at a 5% increase this year. They're still running a little bit behind where Center Township is, which has a multi-year contract, and we're pushing them a little bit harder than the other one. So just ask that you approve this so we can move the contract forward.
Are there some other townships or areas that we-
We actually have four contracts that we work with. Center Township is a multi-year contract, and we have a bi-annual contract with the county for Hillside and Updike Park.
For Hillside and what?
Updike Park.
Thank you.
And then Jefferson is the other one, which will come next.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
It was Steve that seconded, sorry.
Jim? I'll start.
You're doing fine.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number nine is an ordinance, Pat, please number read.
Ordinance number 44, 2024, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for 2025 to Jefferson Township.
And again, this is an annual contract with Jefferson. This is a 3%, this is pretty much holding with our steady budget, and we've seen about the same number of calls with them, so we're just trying to maintain that cost of living growth.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thanks, chief.
Item number 10 is a resolution, Pat, please number read.
Order number 44, 2024. I think I just did that one.
We're on a resolution.
Yep.
Resolution number 39, 2024, a resolution approving the community reinvestment area tax exemption application as submitted by Doc Diesel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Doc Diesel, as you're aware, purchased 13 acres, 15 acres, excuse me, at the North Industrial Park. We're actually going to hold a planning commission meeting in 13 days for his development plan approval or review, and if there's any variances requested. I don't think there's any at this point in time, but we've had preliminary plans submitted to us, and we're reviewing those as we speak. He is doing a $5.2 million investment, is what his estimation is on that, and with that, he is obviously entitled to a CRA for 10 years based on that investment. So I'm asking you approve his 10-year tax abatement for his construction project.
This order doesn't in any way restrict you or the planning commission?
Does not restrict anything.
From, you guys can still-
This, yeah.
We don't like that, do you need to change that or whatever?
No, this is the first step that needs to be done before he does anything.
Okay.
He's got some pipe laying out there that as soon as he gets, if he gets his development plan review, he can start putting in the stormwater outlet. So I mean, he is proceeding and ready to go. So this is the first step that needs to be done before anything is done. So it does not restrict anything at all, sir.
I'm willing to go ahead with it now just because of the value that I see there. So nobody else wants to, I'll make a motion to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Item number 11 is a resolution, Pat, please number read.
Resolution number 40, 2024, a resolution authorizing the police chief of the city of Bryan to apply for grants for the city of Bryan Police Department.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
I'm going to try with your permission to apply for a third time with the body worn camera grants, just to squeeze any little bit of funding I can out of those to support the software we've already been awarded with the previous two grants.
I'll move to suspend. Second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Good luck.
Item number 12 is a resolution, Pat, please number read.
Resolution number 41, 2024, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for the Safe Routes to School project known as Will CR 502-0.37 West South Sidewalk.
Okay, as we're aware, two years ago, we applied for grant funding to finish the Safe Routes to School project that was constructed last year because when we applied for the funds, there wasn't enough money there to actually complete it. We were successful in that, and we're through the design process, through the right-of-way acquisition, and we are ready to advertise for bids. Bids, if you approve, will be due early in December. We will not award until January 2025, so it'll be in next year's budgets. The project is estimated at $299,385.96. We're going to get 90% funding, so a cap of $261,000 roughly on that towards this project. So, and this will run from-
I know, I've read it, but where is this at? Again, I'm so sorry.
This will start on, this is on South Street.
Okay.
It will start at Noble Drive-
Yep.
And go east to South Main Street at F&amp;M Bank.
Thank you.
And this will, just one side of the road, and this will finish the Safe Routes to School project.
And it will also be on the other side of the street, so we'll have to have a crosswalk there-
Correct.
Just because of elevations on the other side.
Okay.
This is deemed to be-
Yep, 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 it's going to move around one side to the other, but that's, it'll be sufficient.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I move to approve.
And I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is a liquor permit.
Yes, counsel, this is a renewal and also a name change, and it's going to Lucky Stop Bryan, it's Jack's Corner Mark currently for the liquor permit, so it's not an actual new one, it's just changing the name and renewing it from prior. Again, you're requesting whether or not you will waive the hearing or not. My suggestion would be to waive it. I don't think we've had any issues on a law enforcement standpoint from that store, so.
I'm moving, we waive. I second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Just want to call your attention, the Home Ohio Magazine issued their publication. We were fortunate enough, as one of the Bryan communities, we got to be featured in the November, December issue. There will be four issues, but Bryan got the highlight on the first one, which I think is awesome, because we are pretty much a Christmas town, and that was highlighted in that magazine. But also, in the article, it really did a great job of collaborating, or talking about the collaboration that business owners, the foundations, the city, the chamber, you know, everyone has together. So again, hats off to the people that work for the city of Bryan, they're amazing stewards of your tax dollars, and also really, really great on quality of life and making sure that our citizens are taken care of to the best of our ability within our budget, so, and also to city council. You know, I think when I started this mayor journey, we had a lot of new council members, and Mr. Hoopie, I think you're the lone guy standing that started before that, but I'm actually just really proud of the way the administration changed routes and the council, everything that we've done together as a team on, is this going to grow Bryan, is this going to progress Bryan, is this to a benefit of Bryan, I feel like is, is kind of culminated in other organizations joining that cause and that conversation, and it's just really opened up our community for a lot of really cool things that are featured in that article. So thank you for your work in that, too.
I just want to say, you know, like you said, I was here before and been, been on this ride all along, and I've had conversations with my wife that, looking back and where we were when I came on and where we are today, I think that not only you, but Mayor Johnson need to have a pat on the back for what you've been able to do to help to promote the city of Bryan, and, you know, I know it mentioned in there about the storefronts, and, you know, you think about the Dora, and you think about some of the things, some of the activities that are going on, and just where we were, we were kind of a, not a dying town, but kind of an idle town at that point, and we have continued to grow as a community that brings everybody together and has, has activities and things to do. And I think that that doesn't happen without good leadership and good support people. So I, I just think that all of you need to have a, a pat on the back for what you've been able to do.
Thank you for that. That's it.
Do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Part of the, Bryan, a lot of.
Two things. Two years ago, North Main Street, like in front of Best One Tire, we had to do an emergency concrete repair through there where we tore it. The concrete was just heaving, breaking up, causing damage to vehicles. So we did an emergency asphalt repair there, and this spring, I asked for permission to apply for a grant to repair that through Monty Valley Planning Organization's capital program through ODOT. I was notified we were successful in receiving that grant. My estimate was six hundred and forty thousand dollars to remove the concrete.